Please move outside. Ladies and gentlemen in the back, if we could call this to an end please. If you need to continue conversations, if you could step outside, that would be helpful. Mayor Clarkson is not with us this evening, he's out of town, so I'm going to try to get us through this. First item on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance. I'm thinking with everything going on across the country as it is today or this week and the past weeks, I'd like to ask our chief if he would lead us in a pledge.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't think we have any announcements or presentations for this evening.
We do have Councilmember Robinson.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'm going to find it. We have a new venue in town. It's called Onion Man Theater, and I would like to make this announcement. I am pleased to announce the Onion Man Productions is now a member of the Shandly Community located in Plaza Del Sol at 5522 New Peachtree Road. Onion Man produces live theater productions, offers writing instruction, and provides other performing arts services. For the playwrights who craft good entertaining stories to the directors and actors who bring these visions to life, Onion Man's approach to theater is all about peeling back the many layers of the creative process. Their mission is to produce new plays that are grounded in good storytelling and construction, but also in writing that explores the larger questions of life. The opening of this newest addition to Shandly's art scene marks the culmination of nine years of work by Onion Man's founder and artistic director, James Beck. From attending his high school football games at North Cad Stadium to eating dinner at the Mad Italian for more than 20 years, James has a long history with and a great deal of love for Shandly. As such, he is very happy to find a home for his theater company in Shandly and looks forward to creating stronger bonds with our community. Onion Man's annual signatures event is currently up and running. Summer Harvest, the Lakeside Plays, is a collection of 10-minute plays all sharing the same lakeside setting. No, there's not a natural lake in the theater, but certainly a dock in the back porch of a lake house. Onion Man's goal is to, excuse me, I lost my place, entertain the audience, entertain the audience with eight 10-minute plays to make up an evening of theater. Onion Man takes you on a roller coaster ride of emotion by blending comedy and drama into one collection of original works from local playwrights and one writer from England. So please come join us for a show. We want to be the place for entertainment in Shandly.
Thank you, Liz. All right, under Staff Action Item, it's under City Clerk, we have the approval of the minutes. It's like we had quite a few meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes for the June 16, 2016 work session as submitted. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item B, City Council Regular Meeting, June 21st.
Motion to approve the June 21st, 2016 regular meeting minutes as submitted. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. City Council Public Hearing, June 30th.
Motion to approve the June 30th, 2016 public hearing minutes as submitted. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. City Council Public Hearing, July 7th.
Motion to approve July 7th, 2016 public hearing meetings as submitted. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. City Council Called Meeting for the July 7th, 16th.
Motion to approve the July 7th, 2016 Called Meeting as submitted. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's a lot of meetings. Our next item on the agenda, City Manager Development Department Services with Jacobs Engineering and Safe Build. Anyone take this?
My computer has just died, so I'll try. I'd like to make a motion to direct the mayor to sign the month-to-month contract with Jacobs and to authorize the, not to direct the mayor, but authorize the mayor, and authorize the city manager to strategically plan for the future our development department and to issue an RFP for those development services and building services deemed necessary.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Just like I was building services, not building, correct?
Yeah, building. Did that cover the strategic review of our building and development services? Does that cover the notion of you're entertaining the concept of bringing some of them potentially in-house?
Yes, Councilman.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the development. I need my sheet back, actually. We have a motion and a second to approve the Development Department Services and authorize the mayor to sign a month-to-month contract with Jacobs and the city administrator to explore community development director of the State Department and... Do you got a storm coming?
You didn't tell us to turn off the alarm then.
It's not good. So we might want to turn off our phones. Did I miss anything?
That's right.
All right, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. The next item under City Manager is a resolution for Splotston, I believe. You said we could remove that item, sir?
There was some confusion on Friday after we sent our list to the county. Upon reflection, we provided all information that they had requested, so this is not needed.
So you need consensus to remove that?
Yes.
We have a discussion on that. So one of the things that has been brought to light with in relation to Splotston is the potential elimination of the homestead freeze. I apologize. So one of the things that's been brought up in relation to Splotston is the possible elimination of the homestead freeze. And so I wanted to see if we wanted to take any action potentially similar to our neighbors in Brookhaven, essentially asking that those be made a five-year Splotston instead of a six-year to allow the county to work through some of those issues and maintain homestead.
I'm not clear how that helps.
In essence, it allows there to be a house built in the interim so that they're not mutually exclusive. I just wanted to open that up for discussion or comment.
Isn't the House going to take this up in January anyway? Aren't they going to make the host even possibly retroactive so that there's not the... I'm asking you, have you heard? That's what I seem to correspond to, was the objective.
I can tell you what CEO Lee May said today, and that is essentially that they are seeking that remedy, that they're asking for a bill to be prefilled to that effect, but that there's no guarantees at this point. It's not something that the county or he can say affirmatively that this will be taken up. They have asked for it to be taken up for a...
Well, at least subject to local legislation, or will it have to go to the full House?
It will have to be voted upon by the full House.
And there's no guarantee that after November, if this even gets put on the ballot, that, and if it passes, that it will be resolved in January?
No guarantee?
No guarantee.
We can bring it up as a resolution or request next meeting, but a little bit more specifics.
All right, so we'll just track this item from the agenda. Moving along to Development Department. First item on the agenda is 2016 DCI 04, 5211 Peachtree Boulevard, mixed-use development.
Motion to approve 2016 DCI 04, subject to staff and ARB recommendations with the following additional conditions. The landscape parking garage wall facing the Olmsted shall be irrigated. Materials shall conform to the materials listed in diagram dated July 28, 2016. Convertible space shall not be authorized for this project and the following corrections to staff conditions. One and four as requested by the Development Department. Staff condition one, to be revised to read approval is subject to development. Substantial conformity with the plan to Shandly mixed-use project dated May 2016. The provisions dated June 28, 2016. Staff condition four to be revised to read as follows. All frontage on Peachtree Boulevard and Malone Drive shall be non-residential use. Frontage on Malone Drive shall have a minimum floor to ceiling height of 14 feet and not a street level frontage.
Second.
Discussion?
I actually do have some discussion. I was confused on Thursday night when I heard, number one, I was out of sorts because I didn't have my companion here. And I thought that when there was a discussion about a terrorist retaining wall, that it referred to this retaining wall between the Olmsted and the Nissan development, but apparently it referred to Trackside. And I would like if the developer is here, if he could come up to the microphone or the architect. Is it possible to take that 20-foot sheer retaining wall between the Olmsted and New Guys and terraced it?
We're currently working with the Olmsted to figure out what that is. Their parking deck is 20 feet above us and less than five feet off the property line. Therefore, the wall has to be built in such a way to just carry the load of their parking deck.
Okay, so it might be possible, and you're working to see if it is, and if it's not, then it just can't be done. I can...
We'll investigate.
And do you want me to put in here a condition that you find artists to decorate your utility boxes, or are you going to do that?
I have no problem with that recommendation. We're working several options on those, so we don't want to see green boxes any more than you do.
Okay.
My point of questioning, thanks, is for Gary. And Mr. Cornell, I'm curious, with the removal of the convertible space on the ground floor on Malone, would that being reverted back to non-convertible space or traditional commercial space, are the plans, do you have a regular set of plans where they can actually produce the product necessary without further variances?
Yes, I submitted that plan to you at the public hearing. It should be on the screen. It's the one June 28th.
Okay, is that one you referenced in your motion?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
As amended, on June 28th?
June 28th. And already in showing it.
I would get over seven more minutes.
And the second five minutes of that motion was recommendation from staff correcting the conditions previously. And I've read those, we're paying them, so I'll be sure to get those to you as well.
I'll have any further questions, thanks.
John, good?
Good.
All right, we have a motion and second as stated by Councilman Cusman. All in favor? All right, that count carries unanimously. And you'll provide a copy of everything you stated to this panel.
Don't think about it. If you decide to start playing nice.
Sorry.
Yes, I will.
All right, next item on the agenda, 2016 PUD 01, 1965 to 1989 Dairy Circle Ashford Place.
Motion to approve 2016 PUD 01, subject to staff and ARB recommendations with the following changes. Modification to staff condition 19 to state score monitor retention or detention facility shall not be placed within the 50-foot stream buffer or 25-foot additional impermeable buffer. And an additional condition of mechanical components, including but not limited to HVAC, shall not be visible from any public right-of-way. Incorporating the changes of staff at this point.
Second.
Any discussion? So I'm, the not putting the retaining, the retention pond inside the stream buffer, and the second part of that was not within, what was the second part of that?
It's the 75-foot stream buffer. And there's a 50-foot, there's a 50-foot, 25-foot distinction.
Okay, so now you don't want it within 75, 75 feet of the creek?
Which is in line with the capacity order.
Okay. Is that what the UDO says? Because I think we talked about this before, and I was just curious if we're just continuing to condition on something that possibly should entertain changing the UDO to reflect?
Well, the UDO says that we can't have a structure inside that last, that 25 feet, 75 to 50-foot range. We can't have structures, but we can have minimal grating in some impermeable surface like the parking lot in True, for instance. But structures, including septic tanks, are not allowed.
I remember one long meeting where we had the folks from Pond Company come and talk about all of the very natural retention ponds. Is there a way to allow for the retention pond to be in one of those two zones in the event that it were a particular type of retention pond that was more in line with the natural, whatever aesthetics of the buffer area?
If it's not a structure, then it's more flexible. But grating is not permitted once you get closer than 50 feet. So they wouldn't have too much opportunity to change the grades. So if it wasn't already a biosphere, we'd be able to create one once you got to that 50-foot point.
Yeah, no, he would say with the intention that any of those alternatives would be within that segment.
Oh, right on.
So that's a clarity retention pond low ground. The initial plan here was a concrete vault below ground. And then otherwise, if you're looking at a previous storm type, which may or may not be permitted, you're still looking at digging up 15 to 20 feet of earth, which would be, so just to avoid any ambiguity. I'm going to make an amendment to my own motion that council entertain, which is, I had referenced, sorry, I had referenced this page of staff revisions, which we had got just prior to the meeting. And one of those was for staff condition 19, which was actually covered in my original motion. So I would like to strike through incorporating the staff recommendation on my own 19. And I can restate that if needed.
Are you okay?
I will give her a copy as well.
Any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions as recommended by staff and ARB, along with motions from Councilman Cusman, which he will provide to the city clerk. All in favor? Passage unanimously. Next item on the agenda, 2016 PUD 03 and 2016 DCI 05, 5170 Peachtree Road and 1918 Shandly Tucker Road. Now, as Trackside.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request for 2016 PUD 03 and 2016 DCI 05 with staff's conditions and ARB's amendments to those conditions with the following additional conditions. That items number three and eight be stricken. That items number four, five, and six be stricken. Item number seven, excuse me, items number three through eight be stricken. And that's it. Excuse me, items three through eight, my apologies. I'll have to restate that if you'd like me to, if I'm meandering here.
You want to try that one more time?
Sure, a motion to approve as a recommendation by staff with staff's conditions and ARB's amendments to those conditions with items number three through eight being stricken.
Is there a second one?
I'm trying to catch up. One, three, through eight, did it matter?
Maybe a second for discuss. Let it discuss.
Give a second.
No, a second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2016 PUD 03 and 2016 DCI 05, subject to staff and ARB conditions, I'm sorry, staff and ARB recommendations with the following modifications to condition number eight regarding the speed limit that the public works and development department and engineer confirm determining the speed limit after reviewing the additional traffic information provided by the applicant. And a minor modification to staff recommendation number 10, which relates to working with Peachtree Malone to read that they work in good faith with Peachtree Malone.
Okay, second.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment.
All right.
On items number three. Purge payment is not a UDO requirement, and since this developer is going through the lead process, I think that I would like to let the lead process drive purge statement rather than dictate where he puts the purges materials.
So you're asking to strike number three?
Have they committed to in the lead project? Accept.
As do I.
I would also like to make a friendly amendment to add additional condition that is regarding the agreement with Peachtree Malone Lofts. The motion is within 40 days. It's on? Within 45 days, Trackside, the developer, and Marde, has to provide Peachtree Malone Lofts with a written proposal for interpersonal access to the entrance road at Olmsted, which accommodates the relocation of the Peachtree Malone Dog Park. A copy of the proposal should be sent to the city manager.
Accept.
Can you restate that? Do you have it in writing?
Yes.
Are you compelling Parkside Partners to...
Submit a proposal.
Submit a proposal within 45 days?
To Parkside Partners, to Parkside Peachtree Malone Lofts people. And does it not require anybody to agree to anything? I'm just, I've been hearing through discussions that there's not going to be content in writing. To allow the special...
So just to clarify there are two components. One was the staff recommendation that they obtain an interpersonal access. And so we've modified that to that they work in good faith to obtain, because we can't require them to. And then there's additional condition that they provide a written proposal to Peachtree Malone identifying, essentially an offer.
That's correct.
And number three is stricken as well, yes.
So the reason why I, if I could talk about a couple of items then. On the items regarding the facade, on four, five, and basically four, five, six, four, five, and six, have to do with the view of the project from the Peachtree Malone Lofts. And Parkside Partners have worked with the Peachtree Malone Lofts, and ARB have agreed with their plan to plant the trees along instead of doing the parking garage rooftop for someone. And are you all saying, we've all got copies of the one and five-year plans of that planting over the weekend. Are you, did you like that, or did you not like that?
Where?
Because I liked that. I thought that that was, that would have taken us back to the original submission that Parkside Partners made.
But that's already incorporated in the ARB recommendation, where they can reflect the ARB rule from my understanding. Is that correct?
So ARB's recommendation, again, I was confused, I apologize for that. So that four, five, and six are already stricken. So then seven is the streetscape wall being terraced. And there was some concern about the depth or the width of the property that would be required properly do that. Did ARB, you know, I apologize, I don't remember if ARB conditioned differently for that from staff's recommendation or not?
ARB took care of it.
If ARB addressed it, then yeah, then we're in with the ARB position.
Okay, so that's four, five, six, and seven, already three. And then eight compels, has, in some way, our public works department and engineers deciding the speed limit on Shandly Tucker Road. And folks, that ain't going to happen. So I think that number eight is still legitimate condition. No, it's up to the city, does, chief, how do we determine the speed limit on a piece of roadway?
It's going to be from an engineering study, or it could be from somebody with a regional background.
Oh, because we have traffic engineering announced now. Okay, that's right. So traffic engineers on staff then would do a study to see if it needs warrants?
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
So my revision to that was asking, we wait to receive that study and essentially provide a recommendation as to what that would be.
Yeah, I agree.
So that's what I meant.
Yep, I'm done. Thank you.
I think I got it. So we are approving as recommended by staff and ARB items one, two, four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, and 12. Striking items three and eight. And adding an additional condition, as Councilman Mesa stated, that Trackside will submit a written proposal to PML Lofts within 45 days.
We did not strike item number eight, we revised it. That's correct. And we have a good faith provision to staff recommendation number 10.
All right, so I will...
Can you restate that for number eight? The public works and development director shall confirm determining the speed limit after reviewing additional information surrounding traffic flow and patterns.
All right. Yep, good.
All in favor? Passage unanimously.
All in favor? Passage unanimously. Next item under development is 2016 PUD 04, 1961 Fifth Street, Townhouses v. Homes.
Motion to approve 2016 PUD 04, subject to staff and ARB conditions with the following additional conditions. Number one, city council shall approve new or revised facade significantly enhance architectural character, quality, and appeal prior to issuance of LDP. Number two, HVAC and mechanical components shall be screened, so they are not visible from the public right-of-way. Number three, internal streets shall remain private and not be dedicated to the city. Number four, the applicant shall provide a tented blind sidewalk. However, the applicant may vary the location of the sidewalk and landscape strip from UDO requirements to accommodate existing underground utilities. And that's in, according to the staff.
Second.
Especially? Yep. I am interested in the HVAC units possibly being down at the side of the building instead of between the building and Clermont Road. I have the desire for Clermont Road to have a front yard, a front entrance, not just look, feel. And I think that having a fancy front door there that's never used with HVAC in the front yard would not accomplish that. So if you would agree to a friendly amendment, I would like to require that the HVAC units be moved down to one of the sides of the main building on both Clermont Road and also on all three of the exterior buildings.
Is there anyone from the applicant here this evening? Mr. Warren, is that feasible with the length of the rows of tunnels?
The simple answer is, I'm sorry. The simple answer is yes.
Accept. And then on number one, you were talking about the approving the plan, but having, leaving the elevations open for future approval. And I can't remember what we talked about before. Did you want those to come before council, or would you want to direct the development director to be able to approve those elevations?
Those would come before council.
Okay.
So we're approving the site plan and the conditions of not the elevations or the actual building faces.
Is that something that the applicant can work with, sir?
I spoke with the applicant's representative this evening on this very matter. And the answer is yes. We're going to go ahead and proceed with preparation of LDP. We understand we can't do that approval unless we have the elevations.
That's fantastic, thank you very much. And I spoke to the applicant as well prior to documenting.
Have they already run the rules set? Already worked out elevations? Are they going to come like a couple of choices that we can confirm? How's that, how do you want that handled?
I imagine, speaking with the applicant, they're planning to meet with us individually to try and incorporate essentially some design elements. So we want to say a minimal... to try and incorporate essentially some design elements, so we want to say a minimum of something important to us, so they'll work with us between now and the time they submit.
Are you gonna suggest they, they compel them through the ARB process and the elevations?
I'm not.
Good. All right, so we have a motion in a second to approve this item with staff and ARB recommendations in addition with the conditions as stated by Councilman Kuzman and the friendly amendment and regards to H B A C from Councilman Hope and New York's case to City Clerk. I'm not gonna try to repeat everything that she said.
The tape recorder will repeat everything you said. I actually would like to get it tried, so let's try that on the next one, and then yes, I'll present it to the City Clerk after the meeting.
The next one should be pretty easy, right? All right, all in favor? Pass as unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item twenty sixteen V fourteen forty-four, Wayne Shandley Dunnwoodie Road Holiday Inn in Kansas Street, Hotel.
Motion to defer twenty sixteen V fourteen to the August regularly scheduled council meeting on request of the applicant.
Second.
Council work session?
Council work session. Council work session.
Second again.
Any discussion? All right, they have a motion to defer this item until the August work session, all in favor. Passage unanimously. All right, moving on to Police Department, Budget Request for a replacement police car. Is that it? You guys are getting up on the lady?
Does that mean it's over?
That means it's deferred until next month.
Right, so there's no discussion?
There's no discussion this evening.
There is citizen comment at the end of the meeting.
A big part?
There is citizen comment at the end of the meeting, if you wish to stay around, you may comment.
So we can stay comment at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
That is correct.
All right, moving along to Police Department. Motion to approve budget amendment for the replacement of the police car.
Do I, I don't even think I need to, as submitted.
Second. Do we need to specify where that additional funds come from or is that already in the budget?
Just specify fund reserved to be on the safe side.
Motion to approve the budget amendment for the replacement police car as submitted with the amount of money to come from the budget.
Second. So we've got the large amount of money is the net, what's coming out, the seven thousand or the, just the seven, just the net amount, right?
The net amount is what's coming out, but the budget amendment has to be for the full amount because you have to show the full amount as an expenditure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second to approve budget amendment for replacement police car with the funds coming out of reserve. Is that correct? All in favor? Pass as unanimously. Retiring police officers to retain weapon and badge.
Motion to approve retiring police officers to retain their weapon and badge as submitted.
Second.
Yeah, do you need us to approve the policy, right, that you drafted?
Yes.
Okay, so without approving just the concept of weapon badges, we actually approve policy.
Okay, S O P.
Yeah.
And to include the standing operating procedure policy.
Second again, with all supporting documentation as submitted, or is that included in there? I'm gonna, I'm making sure we're good and we're not supposed to do it again next one.
As submitted.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to, yeah, yeah, we have a motion in a second to approve the policy for retiring police officers to retain their weapon and badge as submitted in the standard operating procedure policy. All in favor? Pass as unanimously. All right, we have an approval for a contract for an upgrade for public safety software.
Motion to approve the contract to upgrade the public safety software as recommended by staff, and made a budget amendment for that, well.
I think you need to authorize something to sign the contract.
I second it.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the contract for the upgrade of the public safety software as submitted by staff. All in favor? Pass as unanimously.
Mayor Pratton, I just need to confirm, Councilmember Kuzman had the motion on that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda in Public Works, we have an authorization to add a foreman position.
Motion to authorize, motion to approve the addition of a foreman position in Public Works as recommended by staff.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second to approve authorization to add a foreman position as submitted by staff. All in favor? Pass as unanimously. All right, we have nothing under awards authorities.
We do not.
First reading of ordinance is.
I've got two of them, so first, and I got one after that.
Twenty sixteen, sorry, twenty sixteen Z zero three proposed amendment for official zoning map Peachtree Boulevard.
Motion to move the Peachtree Boulevard rezoning to second read in public hearing with the following minor amendments. Amendment number one, to remove the area south of Peachtree Road and east of Broad Street and maintain the C C zoning in that location.
Peachtree Boulevard.
Peachtree Boulevard, thank you for that correction. And number two, to impose a maximum F A R of two point five in the area rezoned.
Is this to change the first proposed amendment to the official zoning map to second reading, is that what you said?
So we would need to.
We have to have a first.
The first read first, so to first, to first read with the, with those two.
Don't you go to first read and then at the meeting next?
We need to move to public hearing.
Make a change.
Either way, you do it now or you can do it before it's read a second time.
If it pleases the council, I think there's a little confusion on this, and I had a conversation with another council member earlier today on it. We typically have the public hearing between the first and the second reading, so it occurs prior to the second read of the ordinance. The purpose behind that is so that you guys can hear it at the first read, if you want to make any minor adjustments to it at that time, you can, and then the public hearing is held, the second reading is done, and then the vote is taken.
So procedurally, if we wanted to make some minor amendments, now will we do minor changes?
So, Johnny, will you do the first read?
I'll have to read it.
I will withdraw my motion and make a motion to allow the city attorney for headings only.
Second.
Yes, I'm gonna go ahead and read this in its entirety because there really aren't any headings in the first one, but I'll read the headings as we move on. Be advised, it's hereby read by the mayor of the city council of Seashandley, Georgia, that the official zoning map of Seashandley shall be amended to change the zoning classification of parcels listed in Exhibit A attached here to corridor commercial C C to village commercial B C, and this such changes the interim of the official zoning map within thirty days after this amendment is approved and adopted by the mayor and council. Further, the city clerk's directive to give him all the minutes of the council meeting at which this ordinance is adopted and followed, July nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, by official action of the mayor and city council, without changes were made to the official zoning map. The zoning classification being parcel list of Exhibit A was changed from corridor commercial C C to village commercial B C, and Exhibit A contains a map with those, a kind of tax map, as well as a listing of the parcels by parcel I D number, ownership, and address is attached to this ordinance. That is the first reading.
Okay, so we need to back up for a second. We need to vote on Darren's motion for first read for headings only. That's correct. So we had a motion from Darren to, for reading on headings only. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Okay, now we have.
I'm gonna read number two oh one six T A dash twelve, chapter three twenty, for the first reading.
Can we take that as a second item? Can we handle Peachtree first and then move on to that one? That's two separate.
Peachtree's done. But we'd like to amend it. We'd like to amend the first read.
So we handle first read for Peachtree Boulevard, the goal is to.
But now you want to amend that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we can have that changed for the second, if the clerk wants to make that a part of the minutes, that's fine. What is it that you're bending about what I just read?
We're removing some of the crosshair there.
I believe we'll, we'll want to discuss it as well.
In consensus.
We can do it now.
You can do that now so that it can be changed so that the next reading we have the way you want it to be.
So they can advertise between now and the public hearing? And I think it might, our text to listen?
The ad is already gone in now. We can act in a manner that is less, has less change than what was proposed, so if you withdraw some area so that it's not being changed, that's permitted. If you expanded the changed area, that would not work without re-advertising.
Let me try that again since I went through my earlier motion. Motion to amend the proposed amendment to the official zoning map of Peachtree Boulevard to remove the area south of Peachtree Boulevard and east of Broad Street from zoning, and number two, to impose a maximum F A R of two point five on the area rezoned to village commercial.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to keep the map as submitted by staff.
Councilman Mesa has offered a substitute motion to keep the map as submitted by staff. If there are second on that, that motion will die for lack of a second, so we'll go back to Councilman Kuzman's original motion.
All the properties south, on the south side of Peachtree Boulevard will maintain the current C Cs of.
South of Peachtree and east of Broad. And a minor amendment to impose a maximum F A R of two point five.
Can I ask you a question on that? Is that something that's typically done where you have a separate F A R from the rest of the zoning C C of B C?
It's not typically done, but it may be done legally, I believe, and we can carry it out. It's like any other conditional zoning.
Gotcha.
So would that be, be like, B C's conditional, or like, sort of like?
That's right.
Part views?
Yes.
And just to share my thought on that, is it C Cs of two point five F A R and B Cs of four, and so I'm concerned about the impact of increase in density, but that amount without really doing any sort of study that I'm gonna chat about.
I know, I don't say much, but I understand.
I'm just sharing.
Gotcha. So is east of Broad those areas that are from Curry Honda north to the.
Councilmember Higgin, can you please speak into your microphone? Thank you.
Curry Honda to.
Curry Honda to Wendy's, and then all that area, then the south Peachtree Boulevard would be directly across the street from Broad all the way down up to the.
Any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion to approve the proposed amendment for the official zoning map of Peachtree Boulevard with an amendment to remove the areas south of Peachtree Boulevard and east of Broad Street, and amendment to impose a maximum F A R of two point five.
There was no approval because it hasn't moved to second read, it's just to modify the proposed amendment.
But the motion is to approve, to move to public hearing?
The motion is to modify the re-zoning. You're just, and first reading.
The public hearing will automatically occur because it's going between a first and a second read.
All right, so we're gonna modify this to move this to public hearing.
I do have one question before voting for them. Gary, does that do anything to our ability to come back and address the southeastern portion of this that we are choosing to leave out right now? We're gonna have to wait six months, five years, the rest of our life, or what?
No, it's not subject to that requirement, it's said as a zoning denied and can't be re-appplied for, that has to do with, it has to do with being a property owner, not city council.
So we'll revisit the next month if we want.
I believe you can.
But this would make the, the all the dealership would be non-conforming now, and then the, all the banks would be, except for Wal-Mart's Fargo, would all be non-conforming now?
If they have drive-throughs.
If they have drive-throughs, that would still do.
They all pay that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think that's a conversation for another day. I know, it must be.
All right, so we have a motion in a second.
Now, I do have one concern, and I'd like to force the concern just because I'm unclear. The conditional zoning, which is to say, now, we said that you were gonna get B C, but now we're drawing back and saying that B C is limited to F A R of two point five, that's something that hasn't been advertised, that's something I'm a little leery of because it's more restrictive, not less restrictive, than what we advertised. So I would hope that city council might reconsider whether they want to include that at this time, or make it part of an action at a later date, or perhaps defer this action in order to re-advertise or change in that floor area ratio. Was I really mistaken about, I didn't know that was coming to mind.
What leaves the council, would you like to push it back a month to re-advertise and move it?
No, I can proceed, I forgot to proceed.
If you're moving, you can make the, you can make the motion next month to change before it goes to second read.
Actually, you can't, you still have to advertise.
Advertise because it's more restrictive?
Correct.
Okay. What are we doing in the comprehensive zoning plan again? It seems like we're, there's a lot of conversation about changing a lot of stuff because we're seeing a bunch of stuff coming in, and it sounds like we're playing a lot of defense and not really kind of going by the plan, it feels like. What, when is, where do we do for like a real comprehensive zoning plan update where the whole community comes out and we put a bunch of stickers on the boards and decide what we want to go where again? When is that?
The Department of Community Affairs gives us five years. This city council can authorize that at any time, you don't have to be limited by the Department of Community Affairs.
What is our normal five-year, next five-year cycle?
It would be like two thousand and nineteen.
That's long too.
But I think that we can address this the way that we've been doing with the changes to the U D O anyway.
Is there any reason we can't re-advertise it? It seems like it's lost sufficient time.
Yeah, we can have it in the ad so that you could have it available for an action in September, but our public hearing in September, but I can't have edge before August, include the condition that it's a two point five F A R.
Yeah, I would kind of be comfortable with us creating a method where it was very clear that that was a different type of zoning, so that people didn't take a look at the zoning map and think one thing and realize that they do the help deal and trip upon the fact that there's different far or something like that.
Whatever, it'd be helpful going ahead and advertising that for first read next month, or the month in September, the two point five?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Can we go ahead and move forward with, if we strike the two point five tonight, can we add it to the list to advertise for September?
I think that's a question for Mr. Cornell or Henry.
Well, I'm looking to see if that's supported or not.
So what you're saying is that you want, we want to just totally do away with this first read entirely on this item, or you want to include that? first read entirely on this item, or you want to include the, the portion that we-
No, include, include it, but revisit the 2.5 September, later date. But I'll accept the amendment, let's do this. I'll, I'll accept the amendment to strike through the, the 2.5 FAR maximum. And then we can, we can revisit it if we need to, later date.
Hey, Mr. Kuzman, you want to restate your motion?
Sure. I'm trying to hold it. Motion, motion to modify the Peachtree rezoning to remove the areas south of Peachtree Boulevard and east of Broad Street. That will happen.
All right, we have, you got something? All right, we have a motion and we have a second?
Yeah.
The motion and the second, all in favor? We're back here, Mr. Kim. Are you good, Amy?
I think so. I'm gonna tomorrow. I'll do the recording.
We'll all be in your office tomorrow explaining all of this. All right, Joe, proposed UDO text amendment. Do we have?
These are very short. We can, we can read these if you want to. There's, there's very much, very little to it.
What's the pleasure, Council?
I defer to Joe.
Well, there's been really no headings, or at least, okay. Be it our name hereby, and see if our name in the City Council, provisions of Title III Development Permitting specifically treat industry requirements, Paragraph A three, be amended by editing as follows. It will now read, specimen trees located outside of required building setbacks must be preserved with less than 20% disturbance of the critical root zones. Part two of this one is, provisions of Amendment 2.0, Bumper Landscaping and Tree Preservation Administrative Guidelines shall be deleted and replaced in their entirety with Exhibit A, which is a new Amendment 2.0 concerning Bumper Landscaping and Tree Preservation and Administrative Guidelines. That's the first reading of that. Next is Amendment to Provisions, Chapter 230, General Use Provisions, Table and Permit and Permit uses shall be amended as follows. Use 4.7 on the rental establishment shall be permitted as a use permit, except for supplemental use standards in Section 240, except for the indicated in the symbol S, and followed in districts CC, IT, I, and A. That's the first reading of that. Next is an ordinance, be it ordained by the Mayor of City Council, the City of Shamley, Georgia, provisions of Chapter 25 concerning off-street parking loading standards. Subsection B shall be amended by editing the Paragraph 4 as follows. Paragraph 4 shall be drained so as to prevent damage to existing properties and public streets, and where possible, shall be drained towards infiltration swales located in five-foot head-to-head landscaped strips required between vehicles in Subsection 320-21, Subparagraph A4. That's the first reading of that. Next is an ordinance concerning Title II Land use and zoning, Chapter 240, be it ordained as hereby ordained by the Mayor of City Council, provisions of Title II Land use and zoning, Chapter 240, particularly with respect to supplemental use provisions, residential, single-family attached townhouse dwellings shall be amended by inserting a new Subparagraph P, which will read as follows. P, except for the NR3 zoning district used to develop and continue for townhouse units having a 50 feet of frontage on street classified as a boulevard, primary or secondary street, shall include office, retail, commercial, or restaurant uses approved by the City Council in amount of less than 6 feet square feet per dwelling unit or total of 25 hundred square feet, whichever is greater. Also, as a part two, same section, dwellings, Paragraph 1.1, 1.3 should be amended by editing text in Subparagraph K, which will read as follows. K, of individual townhouse driveways shall have access to a public street that is classified as a boulevard, primary, secondary, or theater street. Then on 50% of the townhouse developments with more than 20 units shall have rear-entry garages. Alleys are permitted as principal means of access for these units. See Section 350-3, requirements for new streets, or specifications of that is, that is the first reading of that.
Thank you, Joe.
Mike, want to have a motion to read headings, please? This is, I'm moving now to the second readings.
You want to-
Make a motion for City Attorney to read headings only for the second read items. Second?
Yes, I'm sorry. I wanted to get this for a reason, I'm sorry. All right, so we have a motion and a second to allow for the City Attorney to, to read headings only. All in favor? That's unanimous.
This is second reading of an ordinance concerning 1959 and 1965 Brad Street and 3893 Claremont. Be it ordained as hereby ordained by the Mayor of City Council, the City of Shamley, the official zoning map, shall be amended, change zoning classification and product parcels, parcels 182440404, also known as 1965 Brad Street, parcel 182440405, also known as 3690 Claremont Road, and parcel 1824404026, also known as 1959 Brad Street. Those will be changed from neighborhood commercial to, to corridor commercial. That's the second reading of that. Our vote.
Motion to approve the rezoning notification for 2016 Z dash 02, with stack conditions with the exception of condition number three, which shall read, 100% of the street frontage on Claremont Road will be, commercial, retail, office, or restaurant, and 50% of the street frontage on Brad Street, not including the rental office, will be commercial, retail, office, or restaurant uses.
Second.
Discussion?
Do we want to add any? Do we want to add anything about it being in substantial conformity with the renderings that they've shown previously?
Make a friendly amendment?
I'm asking a question.
I would agree.
Okay, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that the design shall be in substantial conformity with the renderings presented at this June 2016 public hearing.
I accept that.
All right, so can we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
Do we still have, do we have a second on the friendly amendment?
This, John.
I'll second that, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve zoning ID 1824 Claremont, 1959, and 1965 Brad Street as recommended by staff, and with the conditions as read by Councilman, Councilwoman Robson and the amendment by Council, Councilman Kuzman. All in favor? That passes unanimously.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Next is the second reading of an ordinance concerning Chapter 300 of the UDO. Be it ordained as hereby ordained by the Mayor of City Council, the City of Shamley, provisions of Chapter 300 shall be amended by adding a new subsection concerning building permits for multi-story buildings and certain restrictions for those also mixed-use buildings with three or more stories. Part two is another revision of Chapter 300, subdivision, general standards and procedures concerning preliminary flats, by deleting Paragraph B, sequentially reading number in the subparagraph below it. Also, provisions of Chapter 300, Subsection B, Paragraph 7 of Section 300 dash 61, asserting the location of proposed streets, using slots, parks, rental spaces. And then Part four, provisions of Chapter 300, Part six, Section 300 dash 68, shall be amended by deleting certain text from Subsection B, as listed in the ordinance. That's the second reading of that.
Motion to approve the proposed UDO text amendments. Shall I go through the numbers? 2016 TA 05, 2016 TA 06, 2016 TA 07, 2016 TA 08, 2016 TA 09, 2016 TA-
Councilwoman Robson, I'm sorry to interrupt, but not all of them have been read yet.
Oh, how many did you read? I'm sorry.
He's only read, he's only read number five.
Oh, okay. Number five? Are they A, B, C, D?
He's read A.
Oh, okay. Motion to approve that one.
Second.
I probably want this to be, oh, yes.
We have a motion and a second to approve number five. Any discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously.
Next is the second reading of an ordinance concerning streetscape guidelines. Be it ordained as hereby ordained by the Mayor of City Council, the City of Shamley, that the unified development warrants be amended concerning streetscape guidelines, Part 3.5, streetscape guidelines to street sections, street state scape, what I said now, guidelines, typical street sections, and provisions concerning streetscape guidelines, typical street sections, local streets, and local streets except NR1 and NR2, replacing that with certain text. Part five is, add in the 3.5, streetscape guidelines, typical street sections concerning typical curving details. And that is the second reading of that.
Motion to approve UDO text amendment 2016 TA dash 06.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? We have a motion and a second, item number six. I had a, I had a question on this, but I'm gonna, I think I'm, I think I'm okay. All in favor? That passes unanimously.
Next is the second reading of an ordinance concerning definitions of 240, for Section 240 in the UDO. Be it ordained as hereby ordained by the Mayor of City Council, provisions of Title I Administration, definitions be amended, there'll be a new definition for light school. I think it'll be one put in there. Also, as far as uses, light school will be put in as a table, in the table of permitted prohibited uses. Also, art shop will be in the table of permitted uses. Performing arts center will be defined where it may be used. Land use zoning section of Chapter 240, Section 240 dash 1, event center will be defined as a use in the table of permitted, permitted uses will be amended to provide for restaurants providing hookah. Part seven, provisions, Section 240 dash 13, concerning multi-family residences shall be amended concerning multi-family dwelling units within 100 feet of a private private street. Part eight, Section 240 dash 30, 13, rather, supplemental use provisions shall be amended by adding a new paragraph which will be concerning restaurant providing hookah, concerned indoor seating. This is second reading of that ordinance.
Motion to approve UDO text amendment 2016 TA dash 07.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimously.
Next is a second reading of an ordinance concerning definitions, as well as bumpers, landscaping, and tree, tree protection. There's a definition for critical root zone in Chapter 110, under development permitting, standards applying to all projects shall be edited. And then Part three, landscape standards for permanent bumpers shall be amended concerning plant materials and planting ratios and layout. Part four, provisions of off-street service parking lot planning requirements shall be amended to edit that paragraph concerning placement of wheel bumpers parking spaces. Part five, provisions of Section 320 dash 21 concerning off-street service parking lot planning requirements shall be amended by changing the wording from Paragraph V concerning perimeter landscaping strips. Part six concerns tree preservation replacement regulations. That's amended. And Part seven, tree preservation replacement regulations, again, specimen trees shall be amended concerning removal of trees and replacement thereof. Part eight, also tree preservation replacement, trees planted in parking lots as required in 320 dash 21, is how that paragraph is amended. Part nine, development permitting, Chapter 320, minimum site EVA density shall be established using formula described in Section 320 dash 39. Part 10, development permitting, recompense and alternative compliance with respect to tree preservation replacement regulations. Each EVA density unit that cannot be placed on the site shall be replaced by one for one off-site by species, minimal caliber stated in Subsection 320 dash 37. This is the second reading of that.
Please, Council?
Question?
Motion, motion to approve, 2016 TA dash 08.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve number eight. Any discussion?
I can't possibly read fast enough. Does the amendment to this include the changing from the 10-foot critical root zone to the 20-foot?
100% to 20%.
I believe it does.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item number eight. All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Next is an ordinance concerning standards which apply to all districts, Chapter 230. Those provisions concerning hedges, fences, and walls shall be amended concerning where fences may be permitted, what type. Part two, temporary event signs, duration of placement and size. And then Part three, that's number and location of such pre-standing signs. Part three, sign regulations, figure 260 day seven, shall be amended by changing the title from other permanent signs allowed to visibility clearance and sign height restrictions on driveways and intersections. Part four, assigned regulations are amended by editing a paragraph concerning building signs and certain restrictions for those, as well as automatic changeable copy signs being allowed on the commercial and industrial properties, developers, DCC, CCC, IP, or ISOM. That's the second reading of that ordinance.
Motion to approve the amendment to the UDO, or text amendment to the UDO for number 2016 TA dash 09.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number nine. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimously.
Be it ordained as hereby ordained by the Mayor of City Council, provisions of Chapter 240 supplemental use standards shall be amended concerning sales or rental establishments to drive-in facilities, includes criteria for those. Part two, provisions of Chapter 240, supplemental use standards, sales of rental goods, merchandise, or equipment, non-vehicle vehicle related, and the sales of rental establishments of drive-through facilities, there is amendments concerning those uses. And then Part three, the provisions of Chapter 250, off-street parking loading, Area five is amended, wheel bumpers shall be placed at head of all parking spaces of landscape strip or cyclone. That's the only language left in that section provisions, Chapter 250, off-street parking, location, design, and construction. In its new language, wheel bumpers shall be made of concrete, a minimum of six foot long, five inches high, and six inches wide, and securely fastened to pavement by steel rebar or steel anchors. Part five is off-street parking, that's stacking spaces for drive-through facilities, and amendments for that. They shall be provided for any use having a drive-through service window. And then additional location and design standards for drive-through service areas is Paragraph B, B, and the provisions of Chapter 250, off-street parking loading standards, minimum parking space requirements table- parking space requirements, table, is amended by adding, whether it's an art shop, restaurant providing kuka, event center, performing arts center, and a light school. Last, we second reading of that.
Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve the proposed UDO text amendment number two thousand sixteen TA dash ten.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve item number ten. Any discussions? All in favor? Passage unanimously.
Last is chapter two thirty, standards applying to all districts. Your name is here by our name, the mayor of the city council. The provisions of title two, land use zoning, chapter two thirty, be amended. First amendment concerns setbacks encroachments. Part two, zoning provisions, setbacks, shall be amended by replacing the illustration in the code with the illustration provided in exhibit A, attached to the ordinance. Part three, concerns administrative variances, storefront minimum floor ceiling height, three number of sub paragraphs. Now that concerns building height and storefront first floor minimum floor ceiling height. And that is the second reading of that ordinance.
Motion to approve the proposed UDO text amendment two thousand sixteen TA dash either that.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve item number eleven. Any discussion? All in favor? Passage unanimously. I don't believe we have any mayor and council items this evening. Moving on up to citizen comments. If you'd like to make a comment, please come up to the microphone and tell us who you are and your address, and you have three minutes to express your views on anything that you want to talk about.
It's a monologue, don't dialogue.
It's a monologue, don't dialogue.
My name's Bill Dillon. I live at eighteen forty-two Queensway, and I wanted to make comments about the proposed variance on the height restrictions with relation to the proposed hotel at Shamblin-Dunwoody. The municipal code, section two forty thirteen A eleven, says that extended stay hotels must be constructed on two acres of land. This is one acre of land. Extended stay hotels under provision thirteen A eleven A three says it must be four stories maximum. This is six. Means it's a hundred and fifty percent variance from what is allowed under the law. Under two forty thirteen A eleven, it says hotels are limited to no more than twenty-five guest rooms per acre. That means that the proposed hotel in this case would require six acres in order to adhere to the municipal code in this case. He wants to do in one acre, going up six stories, what the law requires him to have six acres to do. And my point is, is that we elect you as councilman and our mayor in absentia to protect us from this sort of development. This is gonna be a traffic nightmare. This is gonna be something that's gonna decrease our property values in Gainesboro, where I'm gonna be forced to look at this monstrosity from my front yard and my back deck. And I'm gonna have to listen to the rooftop bar, and it's something that's prohibited by the law, and it's something that we shouldn't even be discussing here, because it is, it is only one-sixth the size that it should be. This facility should be on six acres, and it's being proposed to be put only on one. A variance would be if you wanted to build a four-story building and then they put a satellite dish on top, and it was gonna be six feet tall. This is not a variance. This is a provision that proposes the city ignore the municipal code and ignore all the voters who are in this room that have come here tonight to object to this one thing, and it's because it's illegal. And as a taxpayer, I wanna avoid the situation where my tax money is being spent in needless litigation, where this city is sued and where this developer is sued because of these violations of the law. This is not close. This is not a variance. This is a situation where somebody's coming in and saying, our tax revenue is gonna fill your coffers, and therefore you should ignore the law. And I assure you, ladies and gentlemen, that this group of citizens is not gonna ignore this situation. We will fight this, and we will sue you, and we will do what we have to do.
Address the council, sir.
To prevent this from happening. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I'm Virginia Woodley. I'm an attorney in Atlanta, and I represent the, yeah, the developer, her vinyl land, and Mr. Hosen. And just to hopefully alleviate some of the concerns, and I take it this gentleman was not talking as proponent tonight as he was last week? I don't think he was. I might be a sucker. But to alleviate hopefully some of the concerns, the extended stay portion has been withdrawn, and, and so at this point, the proposal was just for holiday inn and suites without any kitchen facilities in the rooms. And, you know, to address some other concerns, I think we would like to have the opportunity to meet with some of the neighbors in between now and the next meeting and address some of the noise concerns, that sort of thing, which would hopefully help with making it at least a little happier, if not happy, with the planes from the side.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm probably gonna need a little special, something called my address. It's six oh nine nine Bowlin Bridge Road, Claremont, Georgia, three oh five two seven. And some of you know me. I've been, I've tried to all this in three minutes.
So, I'm sorry, can you say your name?
Oh, Tommy Savage. I'm not Tommy Savage, I went on this killing spree out of Sham County a few weeks, months, two back. I've had people calling, Tommy, you all right? And all this, anyway. My problem is, is in less, in six weeks now, it's just, they're just turning into a trash dump over there, a lot of people, and I'm just gonna keep it simple. I gave a lot, I emailed y'all a lot of, each one of you, a letter, and some of you got, some of you may not have, about what we're doing, is I think that needs to be stopped. I, I could work with them, but I asked them if they weren't embarrassed that they put a big, y'all put a big old trash can over there a while back, and here we go. But I don't think I'd do that again way until like February and clean the thing out again spotless, and then just on and on and on. I'd like to see the, I'd like to see that change, and I'd like to see it not be a dog garbage dump. So, I've been working with the police office over here, see if we can't do something about this, because it's just, I mean, there's people coming over there cleaning their cars out that you never ever see over there again. People come, they come over there on Sunday morning, they look, people from Lawrenceville all around, and play, play all day with all their stuff, and then those young kids come out over there Sunday afternoon, and it's just over and over and over and over again. Now, y'all, for eight years now, I've seen just over and over, every like two or three years, somebody come over there and cleaned out, it looks like the palace at Versailles or something, and then here we go again, and again, the grass grows. Now, there's one really good thing, people don't care, I don't care about the grass, it's a beautiful place, and they deserve it, and that is getting out of here. I think it's time to maybe give them one more opportunity. I don't know what's gonna happen over there a period of time, but a lot of people use that, and people that's, as I said, for an especial circumstance. Well, there's what now, what made me so mad, is there's just all kinds of food falling out and all kinds of stuff like this, and, I don't know. I'm trying to see what we can do about this, but I believe, there's people over there that, I believe, I believe they can't do that. I believe I'd close the place. I'd, whatever happens over there, so that wherever they go, whatever, over a period of time, it's just full buildings over there, so they need to learn that, that you can't, that that's not acceptable behavior, that they have to take care of something that's being given to them. I've told them many, many times, swear to God, that you're letting them play like that, okay? Little kids playing trash, it's just, but anyway, that letter kind of explains it. We won't work, please not, this would be my suggestion, is, and so not, not weeks and months from now, but well before February, when the, when the new facility's opening up, is put up those signs that say ordinance, law number so-so up, so, and step it up, get it cleaned up, and then let them keep it cleaned up, and if they don't keep it cleaned up, and if they do, what y'all would, would happen to me if I was over, over somewhere throwing trash out all over the place, okay?
Thank you, sir.
And thank y'all very much, man. I appreciate y'all's friendship. By the way, I've enjoyed your experience a lot. I fly five-four up from North High County, and I work with a lot of band members, so I know a lot of people, so I appreciate you. I've had a lot of young people in my life, and I appreciate that. So, see if we can get that done, again, another trash dumpster, or give them another chance, or.
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
Appreciate you.
And thank you. I don't be seeing y'all around, so y'all, they're really.
Yes, sir, thank you.
That's, that's, and, instantly though, there's a uniqueness about them, there's sportsmanship up in there, and I hate to say that.
Thank you so much.
I'll see y'all, we'll talk about that. Got a question.
Hi, my name's Lowell Renzi. This is eighteen twenty-nine Chancery Lane, living in Gainesboro near the proposed hotel. We appreciate the idea that the extended stay concept is withdrawn, but I, a lot of our objections still stand, my objections at least. I still don't see how that height is compatible with residential use, even though that residential use may be zoning CC. The buffer is tiny. It's this little bit, fifteen feet, a fifteen-foot buffer between an eighty-five-foot building and somebody's plot line, that's, that's what, a nine, eight, nine-foot table? That's fifteen feet. I just don't see how that's, anyone can consider that. I don't understand how there's, how there's a hardship on zoning as it is. It's detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't know what we would see happen with Kingston Gate, who immediately abuts the property and is probably another ten feet beyond that, that fifteen-foot buffer. I question whether any trees would survive. There's, there's about a ten or twenty-foot slope there with the amount of excavation needed to put two floors of underground parking and build right up to the line, I think we'd be left with no buffer whatsoever, at least not any trees in the buffer. And finally, I think it still violates the spirit of things that we have in the city code, like transitional height plane and the other things that dictate a reasonable buffer between two properties, especially when they're different uses like this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Hello, my name's Alex Jones. I'm resident at eighteen fourteen Queensway. I'm diagonally behind this property. If they build this, my backyard will be the first private home that isn't part of the Kingston Gate community that they will look down on from eighty feet up in the air on this. Appreciate that they withdrawn the long stay portion of their plan, but there are still many aspects that I don't see a reason why a variance should be given. There's, I don't really see a hardship about the fact that they're trying to squeeze one thirty, one eighty people into one acre lawn. It's an awful lot of people on an awful small amount of property, going on the variances that I brought up, the ordinances I brought up earlier. It's a lot of building, it's very, very close to the property line, I'm very worried about erosion on my property. I'm worried about the traffic that will drastically affect everyone's commute, and I don't see why we should allow for such a large amount of leeway for hotels. It's not, we already have a bunch of hotels in the area, and if we're gonna have something that's gonna be a nice gated community, maybe we shouldn't try to shoot line such a large building with such a small lawn, and give them a smaller one. So, just, I don't see the reason for it. So, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Come on up, don't be shy.
I'm not gonna be shy. Never done this before, and I appreciate the city council, I especially appreciate our police, thank you for everything you do. Since we've been in Shambly, we have great police service. Oh, by the way, I'm Corliss Hall. I'm at eighteen ninety-seven Chancery Lane. I've been in Chancery for ten years, and it has been one of the most wonderful subvisions I've ever lived in. And I'm a country girl from Rome, waxed Georgian, the way I so refer to it much, but I used to have lots of land, not business, but I've lived in the suburb much further out for a long, long time. I've worked forty-four years and plan to work a few more years before retirement, and I looked a long time, saved a lot of money, to be able to move into an environment, and I chose Shambly for the growth that it has, for the community, for the aspect, and I found this wonderful, unique neighborhood, called Gainesboro. I even knocked on the lady's door to say, will you sell me your house? And I've stayed forever, and to be able to go into an area like that and have the most wonderful friends and neighbors that has been there, and to now, and it's, and we've got some businesses there now, and I'm not against business, and, but I appreciate the environment. I appreciate the brothers that we have have moved there because it is like, our own community so close to the city, but we're protected because we have all these wonderful huge trees. And I work for the power company, and when the door goes out, the women, they couldn't call me. And I appreciate the children being able to run around like they can, but we've even begun to have issues with the types of businesses there that are there now, with drug drops in our neighborhood, and policemen have been very grateful to work with us, to have discouraged that. We already have the types of businesses that people go to and making deals at the business and then transact it out in our neighborhood. We're scared for our children. It's great, because when I moved there, there were so many elderly people there, and that's one thing I'm concerned about, is that you're not seeing the amount of people here that would really like to be here, but because of age, and we didn't know about citizen comments, so the mom had to go home, because they're either driving with somebody, they can't drive themselves, or they have to go home before dark. So, if this drags out into the winter, we may not see that many people here, so don't think because they're not here, they don't care. So, I don't know if we need petitions, because I don't know about rules. But as far as the environment, we have a terrible problem when it rains now, and with the amount of underground digging that have to do with excavation, the amount of erosion, the drainage really happens, we've already had houses fall out because of flooding, this will do a lot more to make the drainage flow a lot, lot faster, because we all know if there's not, you know, asphalt's there, the water runs, just like with us hard, dirt now, and the rain view we've had that we need, so that's what, it just runs off, which creates drainage issues, environment issues, erosion, flooding. I really appreciate the spirit of the law. As I said, I'm very strong for the term of the law, don't be against the law. So, we have laws to protect us from this, please enforce those laws, and don't make adjustments just because I know it's important to have tax money, but I pay tax money. I pay forty thousand dollars, over four thousand dollars a year, just to live there. That's over forty million dollars a month. That's a, that's a burden for me, as a single female living there, working hard, four hundred and something dollars a month I pay just in taxes. So, I think that should say something. I've got this wonderful community, they're supportive of each other, we're supportive for the future. The older folks are dying, someone can't be here, we've got younger families moving in. We don't need the crime that this kind of environment would bring, and it's not a gateway that we really wanna look at. A gateway to Shambly, let's find another one that's more appropriate for everyone. And I thank you for your time, and be sure to watch your work in our community.
Thank you so much.
My name's Mike Bryant. I live in eighteen forty-seven Chancery Lane. I've lived there since nineteen ninety-two, and I wanna address the issue of property as well, fourteen forty-four oh one Shamblin-Dunwoody Road. Seen a lot of changes along Shamblin-Dunwoody since nineteen ninety-two. A lot of smaller houses have been replaced with higher density. House at Kingston Gate's an example, was a daycare center and a few houses, I believe, that were replaced. But it was an upgrade, right? And a lot of the infill neighborhoods have been upgraded from what's there. The traffic along Shamblin-Dunwoody Road is incredible, and it's getting worse over here. Adding a high-density, medium-density hotel like this is not in the best interest, and I implore you as the council of Shambly, to please start working with the other cities that abut us, right? Doraville, Dunwoody, Brookhaven, Sandy Spring. Last week when I came to this meeting at six P M., I didn't arrive at six P M. I drove seven and a half miles from UPS headquarters. I work at UPS, I cannot stand being late. It took me fifty minutes to go seven and a half miles. So, adding a hotel to this little area will do nothing to improve the issues that your citizens face every day in trying to get to work, trying to get home, and living in this community to support the tax base and do the things we gotta do. So, I implore you to work with the other cities, and please consider and do the right thing for us and our neighborhoods here in Shamblin-Dunwoody.
Three minutes. Come on up.
My name is Stephanie Weaver. I live in the neighborhood across the street from Gainesboro and Kingston Gate, and I'm also a Shambly property owner as well, even though I live in Brookhaven now. And I just wanted to say that everybody's pretty much said what I would say, except for I would add that the hotel is gonna be a twenty-four-hour business, basically, so you're gonna have lights on. So, you're going to have lights on in the parking lot, you know, all the way through the night, you're going to have people driving up, there's a rotunda that's planned for the park just adjacent to the neighborhood, and that's going to be, you know, people going in and out with their cars, I think they called it like an auto plaza or something. So, you know, this is a 24-hour business in a residential spot, and that's just not really appropriate. I happen to like the Exxon. I think that they're a pretty good neighbor as far as, you know, they're pleasant, they're, I haven't had any problems with them, and, you know, I wish Mr. Hossein well, but I definitely don't think this is the right property, the right project for that space, given, you know, the noise pollution, the noise from the hotel itself, the fact that it's so close to property, the fact that it's going to cause, you know, a lot of land disturbance. I mean, it's just not, this is not a good idea all the way around. So, the other issue that was not brought up was the fact that there's apparently a zoning problem with Kingston Gate, that it was not zoned correctly, and that may have some implications as far as the adjacent properties, how those are zoned, and the variances and so forth. So, at the very least, that needs to be looked at and addressed to make sure that going forward, everything that's developed in that area is conforming to what Kingston Gate should be. So, that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Can I say one thing I forgot?
Sure.
Okay. What I forgot is that, working with the power company, I'm familiar with energy efficiency and LED lights and all that, one thing when they build this hotel, it won't be with lights like you see up here. It's going to be with LED lights. It's going to be very efficient lighting, which is great for efficiency, but those lights are tremendously bright. They're not going to be dull. So, a lot of buffering of trees, it's going to be, you have to kind of like double-do everything, because those lights really shine through, whether above ground or below ground, they still have the advantages of light, which is good, but it's going to make a voice to the neighbors as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name, hi, my name is Anna Kalushki. I live in 4286 Kingston Gate Code. And I just have a suggestion to the applicant. Instead of the hotel, why wouldn't you just build an electric vehicle charging station, and that would be an excellent statement for Chambly, as we have stated earlier, that extended stay would be a perfect getaway, getaway for Chambly. So, instead of that, let's go bring Chambly, and let's build that station. Also, we are looking forward to meeting you guys and speaking, I know I have to address the council, I'm sorry, and your attorney. And one request that we do have, we would like to review the technical zoning documents for this hotel. So, if you could share with the Gainsborough community and the Kingston Gate Code, that would be greatly appreciated upon the meeting. So, looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please spell your last name for me?
Yes, it is K-A-L-O-U, Jason, Jason, S-S-N-S-N, K-I-K-H.
Thank you.
It's Mosk- Smith.
Believe it or not, I do understand it. I have the same problem.
Anyone else?
I had one more thing I might should, cap, so, it's Mike Bryant again. With all due respect to Mr. Hossein, last week when you mentioned that checkout times were later in the day, I'm a business traveler. When I stay in a hotel, I go to work at the regular business time, and I'm expecting that that's going to be true, since he's attracted business travelers to this type of hotel, folks will be going to work, coming back to the hotel the same time I did. So, the solution of it not being a traffic problem that he provided last week, I do not agree with at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I believe council, can I get something?
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew.
Hello?
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that on Thursday morning here in the Civic Center, the regional economic development person from Georgia Power will be the guest speaker for the Chambly Chamber of Commerce's monthly regular meeting. So, that is here in this location on Thursday morning. The doors open at 7:30, the program starts at 8:00. So, we'll look forward to seeing everyone there, here at that.
All right, I believe we have an executive session this evening for the personnel issue.
A motion and a transfer to executive session to discuss a personnel issue.
Thank you, everyone.